Okay, but first. Hey, everybody. Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. This is our work session agenda meeting. This is more in line with getting educated on the issues that we're talking about and getting a more idea from our professional staff. Consultants and we have two items we're going to talk about tonight. One is our strategic plan update, which Alan Sheldon is going to tell us about. Then we'll move into the wastewater treatment plant expansion and funding strategies from a whole lot of staff members here. That'll be quite a bit of information you're to look at. So, okay, Al, you want to run us through it?
Sounds great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This is our quarterly strategic plan update. This gives us a chance for the staff to tell the trustees what we've been working on and make sure that it's aligning with the goals set by the board of trustees. So in our strategic plan, we had four focus areas. They stand as growth and development, infrastructure, community engagement, and organizational strength. And there are goals set within these four focus areas. So first, we're going to dive into growth and development. The first goal we're looking at is the balanced and resilient revenues. So we have an increase in the sales tax revenue as a result of e-commerce. So currently, we're looking at about a 25% increase in just 2021, which is awesome. And Judy, our finance director, is going to be reporting on that next week. Second goal is to identify, attract, and retain commercial development in businesses. So I wanted to highlight some of the new businesses in town. We have Ziggy's Coffee, The Human Bean, O'Reilly's, and Dollar General. And then also, we've had staff speak at the Northern Colorado Real Estate Summit. They gave a presentation about Wellington commercial development, so kind of getting our name out there. And staff is also working with some of our local commercial lenders. They're identifying financing options for small businesses in Wellington, looking at some small business loan programs. And the goal of this is to gather materials that we can provide businesses moving forward. Another goal is in a comprehensive plan, and I'm sure many of you have been hearing about this. This has been a prominent topic. We had the draft out for public comment from March 9th to April 11th. And we received 982 public comments altogether, which is fantastic. And we also had 40-plus residents come to a in-person town hall event where they were able to voice their opinions as well. So there is more to come for that. Another goal that we have is relating to the partnerships that the town has. And there are numerous amounts of partnerships. So our goal with this update is just to highlight a few of them. It'd be a whole night meeting if we talked about all the partnerships. So this quarter, we're looking at Colorado Department of Health and Environment, who helped with the county to get that vaccine clinic up here in Wellington, which was fantastic. And along with that, Laramie County is also spearheading that North Front Range Regional Wasteyard. I wanted to highlight the Wellington Main Streets program. They're working on two grants with our Public Works Department, which look really exciting. Wanted to highlight Laramie County Sheriff's Office and the Wellington Fire Protection District. They provide hours upon hours of reviewing community events so that they can be held in a safe and accountable manner. And as COVID restrictions are limiting, we're starting to have those events again. So I wanted to highlight that. And finally, the North Cooter Irrigation Company, they have been helping finalize some lease discussions and help with the process of getting that water treatment plant expansion going. Our next pillar is infrastructure. So one of our goals is to ensure adequate current and future water supply. We are currently 30% complete with the design phase of the water treatment plant. That'll be coming to the board of trustees soon. And the design phase of the wastewater treatment plant is currently underway with the goal of hitting 30% soon. We also have two different committees, Water Policy Committee and Staff Technical Advisor Committee that works on water policy as well. So we got those up and running. Another goal is to develop long-term funding strategies. As you all know, we updated our water utility rates, the first one being in October and the second one being in January. Along with that, we also updated our raw water fees for our developers, and that happened back in August of 2020. But this will continue to be refined on an ongoing basis as the needs change. And staff is working diligently to do some research and grant funding opportunities. We have contracted with a consultant, Jean McDonald, at GLM Design Group. And the goal here is to create a grant strategy for our CIP projects. So that first meeting is coming up on April 28. We are also pursuing two different grants with the Main Street program for potential improvements on that Cleveland Avenue corridor. Another goal, plan and develop purposeful facilities. So we have our Harrison House Expansion Project, which is serving as an interim town hall to hold staff and provide a one-stop shop for residents to come and get their needs handled. We are currently in the development design phase. It will go to the Board of Adjustments on Thursday. And pending that approval, it will then go to the Planning Commission on May 3rd. Pending that approval, it would start construction in summer of 2021. We also have a grant from DOLA related to a site analysis study for a new town hall down the road. So staff is developing that rubric right now on three alternative sites. And our hiring architects with this grant has created a site analysis for Library Park, which came from a decision made by the board of trustees in January. So they will create that site analysis for us from the three alternative sites as well. And along with the plan to develop purposeful facilities item, transportation stormwater improvements, we are still ongoing with that B DAMs project. And likely that updates will come to the board of trustees soon. And in exciting news, an RFP went out for our stormwater master plan. So that's a big one, and hopefully we find some great contracts. In terms of community engagement, first goal was to build awareness about the town and services. This has been seen pretty drastically in our social media presence. We have 160 Facebook likes. But most importantly, we have 3,468 unique engagements with our content and 47,851 unique page and contact reaches. And this means that 47,851 individuals have seen something about Wellington on their social media, even if they don't follow our page. Another goal is to improve access to local government. So our staff has been updating our website pretty diligently. We received this SSL certificate, which is essentially security for our residents. So it doesn't allow for hackers or anything to send our residents if they click on links to unwanted sites or anything like that. We also had two websites technically, dot com and dot gov. They have now been mashed together. So that will be easier for residents to access as well. And then we have AudioEye in our website now, which basically allows you to personalize the website as a user. So if you need a screen reader because you are visually impaired, provides that option for you. We also, just recently, I think today, will now have translation services from Google on there as well, which is fantastic. We also have a newsletter, which has been really informative. It gets sent out the first Wednesday of every month, started back in December of 2020. Currently, we have 217 subscribers with 27 additional clicks from our Facebook. And a really awesome number down at the bottom there is that we have a 60% open rate. So I mean, 60% of the people that receive our newsletter open it compared to the government average, which is 28.2%. So that's fantastic. Our residents really care, which is awesome. And another goal was that Water Conservation Strategic Communication Plan. So this year, we're trying a strategy of feeding our content. So residents are seeing the same kind of content week by week. So in February, we did the cost of water. We tried to explain what residents pay for and the processes that are required to go into drinking. Providing key drinkable water. We had a video. We had pictures. We had some explanations on our website. And then March, we wanted some conservation tips. April, we're focusing on in-home conservation. And then May, we'll go into outdoor conservation as being formed. We also, in terms of our water conservation plan, we have contracted professional services regarding landscape and irrigation standards update. And we are ongoing replacements with our advanced metering system. And our last goal focus area is organizational strength. So we have the wall of training programs. We had a first monthly manager supervisor meeting held on March 1st. To discuss policies across multiple departments, lots of back and forth between staff, which is really great. We haven't seen each other in a while. So that was nice. And there's been plenty of opportunities presented to staff to sign up for individual training based on their expertise. The last goal here is an efficient employee on and offboarding process. And as a reminder, on and offboarding is when a employee starts with the town, that's onboarding. And we give them their accounts, their software, all those things. Offboarding is when an employee leaves, we take all the necessary items from them. So we created a few forms that'll help with the efficiency of this process and keep some good inventory. And we also have an intranet, which is an internal site for staff to find all their news and resources and things like that. That's a lot of information. So if there are questions, I am definitely not an expert on all of these. We have some department heads and other staff on the call for questions.
Okay, let's just open up to some board members. If you guys have something you'd like to ask about all that, let's hear it. Start with you, John. Anything you want to talk about?
No, it looks good. I think you guys have done a lot on everything. There was one thing that I'd had a question on. Bear with me a second when I find it. Sorry, I wasn't talking. I was trying to find something. Bear with me a second. So with the, we had a grant. I was a little confused on the new town hall site. You said something about a grant for the Library Park site. Could you clarify a little bit what's going on with that portion?
Absolutely, yes. So we received a DOLA grant to do a site analysis study. And this provided the opportunity for staff to really analyze possible sites for a future town hall in terms of size, closeness to utilities, things like that. And so the grant itself is not to build a town hall. It is to determine where is an appropriate site for that.
Do you want to come closer? Would that help to hear perhaps?
This speaker is like garbage disposal. Her good voice has been ruined here. We can't understand.
Well, you want to come up a little further? Come on, get up over there.
This way. Yeah, come. Maybe it'll help. Let's try.
Then the people online can't hear. It's kind of a two-edged sword. So if people are online, I have to talk close so they can hear me, but.
Well, come on up to me. You can do this.
I'll try to do a little bit of both. There you go.
Ashley, anything?
No, I think that staff's put a lot of thought into this, and I appreciate all of the hard work that they put into it, and it looks great. I look forward to seeing, you know, how we accomplish those goals moving forward.
I really like the water conservation logo and message. I think that's really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like the water drop with the Wellington logo inside of it. It's very well done.
Trusty Jerome, got anything?
The only thing I would say is I think staff has really taken up the task of making sure that we are getting as much information to the public as we possibly can. And any, you know, all the fashions that are suitable to try to hit all the different demographics and the way folks take in information. So kudos to the staff for spearheading that and taking it to the next level. Thank you very much for that.
Trusty, one else?
Yes, I have to say, we've had a strategic, this is our second iteration of this, but there's always a lot of stuff, pardon me, going on in the background. And it's nice to see this all laid out because there's a lot of balls in the air right now. And it's, I think, both the communication of it and the executive summary is great, but the graphics on this is wonderful. And I think it looks great. And I would just, you know, reiterate some of the comments that the other trustees, like especially trustee Jerome mentioned, about getting out, trying to get the information out because there's stuff going on here all the time. And staff is working very hard on this. And sometimes it's, maybe we're not reporting it as well as we could, but I think this is, I think it's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll follow up. I think you guys have come a long way in about six months here. I mean, I think you're at the best that we've ever been. Okay, the staff across the board, communication, the whole thing. There's always room for improvement. You reached 47,000 people. That's big. And, you know, some of theirs isn't all that great, I know, but, you know, just, you're really written, you're hitting all the cylinders. So that's good. Keep it up. You know, and you're getting some language coming. That's kind of nice for translation. That's good. Recent news. So, you know, I think you've come a long way. You're doing it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, items. Tonight, we're going to talk about the wastewater treatment plant expansion and some funding strategies. And Patty, you're going to start it all off, right?
Yes, sir. I'm going to start it off. So thank you, Mayor and trustees. One of my responsibilities as your town administrators to develop sound approaches to community challenges and provide that information to the elected officials for consideration. The final water rate increase was adopted shortly after I started my position in Wellington. And I've heard loud and clear the concerns and frustrations from the citizens, which is completely understandable. Knowing that the wastewater treatment plant phase four expansion was looming in the future, an internal team got together to work on options on how to pay for the expansion. The team includes Bob Going, the Public Works Director, Dave Myers, Civil Engineer and Public Works, Mike Flores, interim wastewater superintendent, Cody Bird, Planning Director, Judy Tippett's Finance Director, and Tyler Sexton, the Assistant Finance Director. I'm incredibly proud of this team and their tenacity in deeping, digging deeper, digging deeper week after week to make sure that what is being presented tonight is a sound recommendation. Tyler and Dave did the initial research on funding options, and then the full team met on a weekly basis, starting in, starting the first of the year. None of this has been easy. We understand how rate increases impact the residents, and I tasked the team to investigate every option they could think of in order to keep the rates as low as possible, but still accomplish paying for the treatment plant and prepare for the future of Wellington. You will hear during the presentation how the financial model was built and the various pieces that go into paying for infrastructure of this magnitude and all of it having to fall within governmental accounting principles. You will hear from Bob Going and Dave Myers on why the wastewater treatment plant expansion is needed, the phasing of the project, the estimated cost, and they will give you a walkthrough of the financial model. Cody will provide information regarding growth and impact fees and their impact on the financial model. And Mike will explain the capacity issues that we're currently experiencing with the wastewater treatment plant and the town's efforts in addressing those issues. You will hear from Judy and Tyler about what a sinking fund is, which is something new for Wellington, the outstanding loan for the wastewater treatment plant, Phase Three expansion, a short overview of commercial water sewer rates, and the three scenarios that were provided in the work session packet. The recommended scenario was not determined lightly. There have been many frustrating meetings where the team literally threw their hands up in the air because they just couldn't come up with a calculation that would work, that would accommodate lower rates and still get the project completed as needed. Fingers have been pointed as to why the town is in this position. Looking at the past will not help Wellington moving forward. Although not everyone may not, although not everyone may not support what is being presented, it is a starting point for discussion by the board of trustees, which will roll into public meetings for residents to provide their comments. For tonight, the team will presenting to the board of trustees options on how to move forward and provide a safe sanitary sewer system for Wellington. We would appreciate to be able to provide the presentation and then entertain your questions after the presentation. So Bob, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and board members and the public. I'm just going to give a kind of brief history and just, you know, presentation on kind of how we got here and where we are right now. As some folks know out there, our original plant was built in 2002. And the capacity that plant was 0.45 million gallons per day. That's the hydraulic capacity. And that was, that was roughly enough capacity for five to six, five to 6,000 people in town. In general, the sizing of these plants is really related to the, to the population because it really is just a come-on-per capita basis that the flows are generated that we have to treat. In 2016, an expansion was completed that doubled that hydraulic capacity to 0.9. That's enough for 10,000 to 11,000 people, and that's where we stand right now is at 0.9 million gallons per day hydraulic capacity. Hydraulic capacity is kind of the primary measurement of wastewater, the ability to serve wastewater treatment. But there's another aspect called kind of, kind of biologic demand or biologic treatment capacity, which is more recently included in kind of design efforts, but perhaps wasn't really the overriding goal or aspect of design in the past. And so we're right at over 80% capacity, hydraulic capacity in the plant right now. But we're higher than that in terms of biologic capacity. And Mike Flores may talk about that a little bit more. There's a few reasons why you need to expand the plant. The very first reason is that we need to have a capacity to serve the water that's delivered to the customers. And as everybody knows, we've got a water treatment plant expansion underway now. Regulatory requirements going to change. It seems like multiple times a year. Those are continually changing with the effect of kind of clamping down on what we can do. Best practices for wastewater treatment is evolving continuously. A wastewater treatment plant is really kind of a biologic plant. It, it's designed to basically digest the material that comes in and turn that into something cleaner water that can be released to the environment. As such, the EPA and the Clean Water Act, a lot of the kind of changing environment of that regulatory aspect of what we do is just kind of continually clamping down. In 2019, understanding that we were up against the need to look at an expansion, we hired an engineering consultant, Jacobs, to prepare a master plan. A master plan is kind of a roadmap for where you want to go in the future. An expansion really shouldn't be designed in a vacuum. It should be designed as part of an overall plan, looking all the way out to what you would think of as the ultimate population that would be served by that. So in general, that master plan provided that to us through some modeling. And, and the master plan included things like some process recommendations, looked at the site to make sure that everything would fit. Really almost kind of a conceptual design for the plant and leads into the actual design phase which we're in now. That was the, the treatment portion of that was completed in July of 2020. We put some money in the budget. So the approved budget includes money for the design phase, which we knew that we would be beginning shortly thereafter. And the five-year CIP plan also reflects the construction, anticipated conceptual construction dollar amounts needed to finish the plant. And that was all based on information provided by the master plan as well. So the master plan gave us, again, a conceptual budget for design and construction. And that, that conceptual budget was $36 million for construction. So if you, if you look back into the CIP that's part of the approved budget for this year, especially in the five-year CIP portion, you'll see the projection of when we currently believe those funds will be needed for future appropriations to make the project happen and to continue with the project. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dave, who's going to talk a little bit more detail about some of the financial modeling that's been done to, to this point.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank, thank you, Bob. If you give me a moment here, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, getting there. Okay, so what, what's displayed on screen right now? I thought I would talk a little bit, just briefly.
There's nothing showing on the screen for us.
Nothing showing. How about now?
Yep, got it now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I, I thought I would talk very briefly to recap some of the capacity issues at our current wastewater treatment plant. So, so here's a site layout of the existing plant. This was shown at previous board meetings. The wastewater treatment plant is located southeast of town off the East I-25 Frontage Road. So very briefly here, the headworks building right here, that's where the collected wastewater enters the plant. That was built 20 years ago, and it's at capacity. It can't be enlarged and will not handle the incoming loads. Its equipment is, is pretty old, and it's at its useful lifespan. The big orbital-looking thing here is an orbital. It's a narration basin. And that's at capacity right now, and the structure is key, a key component in processing the incoming loads. Clarifiers, these four circles here, they're, they're, they're operating okay. We went through a recent rehabilitation on a couple of them. But they won't be able to handle the increased future loads as well. The UV building down here, ultraviolet building, that's where the plant effluent is discharged, discharged into Box Elder Creek, which is this green area here. And the UV building, UV system is at capacity now. And it can't be enlarged anymore to handle those increased loads. Other structures here, the, the, the plants, RazWaz Building, there's pumps in there that are at capacity. There's no more room left in this building to expand. Digestor, same thing. They're pretty much at capacity. De-watering facilities here need to be expanded to handle the increases. So, yeah, with that, certain parts of the plant need to be decommissioned because they simply can't handle the incoming loads. They're maxed out and need to be replaced. Regarding loads to the plants and, and some state regulatory issues, I'm going to turn it over briefly to Mike Flores, who will fill everybody out on that. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and board of trustees. So as Dave and Bob both kind of hit on, we are facing some capacity issues, both hydraulically and, and with our biological loading. Another word for the biological will be organic loadings. Right now, we are facing anywhere from a fluctuation of 80 to probably 70, 80% hydraulic capacity every week. On a monthly average, we're sitting right about 80. With our organics, that's our strength of influence. And that's something that the state really regulates us pretty hard on, as much as it, you know, they, they seriously will regulate us on our effluent. They really watch the overall strength of what we're treating. Our plant is designed to treat X amount of pounds per day. And right now, on a, you know, on probably a dozen days per month, we are exceeding our organic loading. We're, we're at 95 to 100% capacity, which kind of starts to, you know, trigger some alarms just as far as our overall treatment now. We've seen some things pre-COVID. We've seen some things during COVID, and we're starting to see some new trends post-COVID. We need, so these are, you know, really just some things that, you know, we all need to watch very close. And we all work together very close on, you know, trying to figure out our future growth. And just something that, you know, we truly need to watch is, you know, our overall taps and our commercial growth and all of those things. And some things, you know, that we've really kind of touched base on is trying to see what we can do to protect this new investment that will be a new wastewater expansion project. And something that, you know, we've talked about as a group, and I've talked very, very close with Dave and Bob, is kind of a protection plan of a BOD TSS surcharge and try to regulate these commercial users that are truly the high strength in town, such as restaurants and breweries, stuff like that. Things that if they dump, you know, bad loads, they could really hurt us. And as we get closer to capacity, if we get an upset, it takes us a lot longer to recover than it would if we were at half capacity. So just to kind of think of it, we've got four years to kind of get this, this existing plant up to the new one. So we're just got to be very careful.
Okay, thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Dave.
Thank you very much, Mike. Just, just. Thank you very much, Mike. Just just to. Set the stage here on on where we're at in terms of phasing on the wastewater treatment plant. As Bob mentioned. The first plant was built in in two thousand and two. That's what we're calling Phase One. The expansion that occurred in twenty fifteen, that's called Phase Two. The expansion we're talking about right now. Doubling its capacity to one point eight M G D is called Phase Three. Phase Four would be our future expansion. So I'm going to keep that in mind moving forward because those terms will come up here. A quick status on where we're at on Phase Three Design. We've been progressing on the design with with cost implications in mind, making some design choices. Cost savings where we can. We are approaching the thirty percent design level with Jacobs. And we're expecting that thirty percent package in from Jacobs the first week in May, so a couple of weeks. At that time, we'll be turning it over to our C mark contractor who will work out a thirty percent cost estimate. We are currently working out details on the contract negotiations with our selected C mark contractor. And we hope to have that finalized very soon. The other thing that we've accomplished in the last couple of months is the first step. In our in our loan applications for S R F, the State Revolving Fund. From 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 the state of Colorado. That's this is the first step in obtaining an S R F loan from the state. That pre-qualification application. Was submitted last month. So that kind of gets the ball rolling. That tells the state we're we'll be coming when a formal application next January. Next steps include an application meeting with the state. And many other submission requirements that that we're working on in conjunction with Jacobs. Those include the utility plan, the site application, preliminary affluent limits, design reports, et cetera. So now moving on to funding strategies, as Patty mentioned, Town Staff, we created a spreadsheet. That that was used to evaluate financial options to pay for this plant's expansion for Phase Three. Let me share screens with you one more time and I'll walk everybody through that. Okay. If you can't see a screen, holler, but you should see a spreadsheet right now. Spreadsheet, this is developed in in Microsoft Excel. And and our our intention here was was to look at ways to fund this Phase Three Expansion. Based upon different input parameters, growth projections and things of that nature, revenue and expenditures. There are four sheets in the spreadsheet I'm about to walk through. The the first sheet or page, I guess it's called. Is is the inputs. So what we're looking at here on this page. Are are variables that can be changed in this analysis. So so green cells. Are are input cells. So if we make any changes to these numbers. Those will ripple through the calculations on this model. And will be presented in the final chart, which I'll get to here momentarily. So one of the first inputs is, as Bob mentioned, our our estimated costs we have right now. For the wastewater treatment plant expansion for the construction that's at thirty six million dollars. And that came from the master plant, subject to change. We'll get a better handle on that number once we get the thirty percent cost estimated in from our contractor. We also look at our future expansion. So twenty years down the road. You know, the plant will probably, it will need to be expanded again. So we started looking at some costs for that and and put in some placeholders, some numbers, some. Good assumptions for that, which gets cranked into the spreadsheet model. And also, you know, how much of of a loan payment we would need to make for the for the next expansion coming in about the year twenty thirty seven roughly. Other input to this to this spreadsheet model. Are the number of the current number of sewer customers that the town has. So that number you see here is, excuse me, forty-two, forty-nine. And those are total use, total users. That includes residential users currently at four thousand one hundred and three and commercial users, one hundred and forty-six of those. Impact fees, this will make more sense to you as I get through these shades, but there's there's a variable here for how much we would like to increase. The impact phase right now it's at zero. I'll show you that momentarily. Sinking fun, this is something that Patty mentioned and I'm going to turn it over to Judy and Tyler here in a little a little bit and they can talk to you more about how that works. Other things looking forward and and by the way, this spreadsheet goes out to to about twenty years to the year twenty forty. So what sort of admin expenses and increases will we be having in those next twenty years? We have green cells mean input, so we can change these variables here and that would ripple through. To the resulting page, capital improvement dollars here. You know, that that's for capital improvement projects to to our sewer system and our wastewater treatment plant. We have a placeholder in there right now for three quarters of a million dollars, starting in the year twenty twenty-eight. With an annual increase adjustment, starting in twenty twenty-nine at five percent. So again, keep in mind that all of these green cells could be changed and this is something that Patty had alluded to on a number of different scenarios that we were running. The next sheet. Looks kind of messy, but if you could kind of focus in on on this, on the top table we have here, I'll I'll get to this other stuff momentarily. But but these are the growth projections that Cody Byrd, Town Planner, came up with after he puts a great deal of thought into this. And these growth projections are integrated into this model right here and 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 a critical component on these growth. Projections are the number of new home permits that will be selling, you know, starting in twenty twenty-one. And and conceptually. Expanded out to the year in case, in this case, he went up to twenty fifty. At this point, I'm going to turn it out over to Cody, so Cody can talk to everybody a little bit about how he came up with these numbers. Cody?
Thanks, Dave. This is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees and public who've tuned in. I'm going to let Dave kind of drive the the cursor there to highlight a couple of things I wanted to call to your attention. Just to kind of give you a point of reference as we're looking at this this spreadsheet. You can see in these these first couple of rows or excuse me, first couple of columns. Twenty ten through twenty twenty, these are, this is actual data. That's our our population, our actual population counts. And the actual number of homes permitted. So the percentage of growth taper there is the actual percentage increase of population in the town over those years. So those are, those are real numbers that we've collected over the the course of time here. When we, when when planners look at the growth of communities, we always project the population. We look back at what have we done historically? And these, you can see there's a lot of variability in these these last ten years from the town from some of the pre-housing or the the post-housing recession, the bubble burst. Some very low percentages and the town was very small at that point. Not growing extremely rapidly, but then you see a couple of years where growth percentage was as high as nearly fourteen percent. Following a year where three hundred and forty-two single-family dwelling units were issued permits. So you see some significant changes in in the variables there. As communities continue to grow, typically what you see is those, the variability becomes less and less and you get a much more consistent. Pattern or trend as the population grows, the percentage of growth usually decreases over time. So yeah, can you move out to a couple, maybe the next decade, Dave? So as we're, as we're, that's perfect. Thanks. So as we're looking at future years for the town's growth, we do have to make some assumptions and a couple of the assumptions that we use is the. Population per household. Currently, Wellington's demographics, we have a very young community. We have lots of young families with multiple children in the households. So we are seeing a population per household of about three point two people currently. Over time, as as communities grow, families begin to age a little bit and you see that population per household start to come down slightly. Conver, similarly, what we're calling a growth taper here, this growth taper variable. As that population continues to grow and households population starts to decrease a little bit, the growth taper begins to to. Begin to shrink over the same number of years. So this is that middle row. Where you see each each year that growth percentage drops a little bit further. As the population grows, that percentage becomes smaller. But you can see that bottom row, the number of of permits we would expect with the the growth taper and the population totals expected. That's that number of housing permits remains fairly steady. We would see, we would expect to see increases over time. For the next twenty, thirty years, but all relative to the population and the historic population or historic permit issuance for the town. Now, what you see in these kind of orange colored cells here in twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. As some others have alluded to, what the town is is looking at is. As we're bumping up against some of the capacities of our treatment plants. We would expect to to see with those. Capacities being reached, a need to. To moderate and control the number of new households that are being issued water taps, which would consequently mean sewer taps. And we want to make sure that we stay within that capacity of the plants. So based on some calculations from our available data at the plants for production and treatment at the wastewater facility. We concluded that we would likely be able to support approximately three percent growth over the next four years. So what we're showing here is that the average there is three percent of those four years that Dave's highlighted for us. And we've had these preliminary conversations with some of our development community to try to understand what. Their commitments are financially for the projects that they're working. One of the things we really wanted to be cognizant of is, once a developer begins construction on a project, they've invested money in infrastructure. That they're putting into the in the ground, they need to be able to continue to pursue that that investment. Or they're going to be in the same boat that the town could be where they're not able to realize the product they need to. So what we've done is tried to understand what the development community's needs are for their current projects that are already underway. And balance that with the three percent growth that the town would expect to be able to accommodate over these these four years. And so that bottom row there that's highlighted, that's the number of permits that we believe we would be able to to issue on an annual basis. To find that balance of meeting the needs of the development community, protecting their private investments, protecting the the treatment plants capacities. And all in all, maintaining this this symbiotic balance of what we think is possible over these critical years. So that's kind of framing the the population projections. And the last thing I was going to mention was the the impact fees. As we know, for any any new development project, with each permit pulled, the developer or builder. Pays an impact fee for water connection and sewer connection. And that becomes really important in this model and Dave is going to start some more about this and Judy and Tyler will touch on it as well. But one of the things that's really important in making that minimum monthly payment is maintaining a consistent stream of revenue from those impact fees. And so the numbers that we're projecting for future populations and the numbers that we're looking at for water and sewer taps. We believe we're we're striking a balance between. The capacity limitations, the need for continued revenues and the protecting the private investments of of the community. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dave and then when all is wrapped up, I'm happy to respond to any questions that the board might have.
Thank you very much, Cody. So one other thing on on these growth projections that that we iterate a little bit upon. Is, you know, when when our our next expansion, our Phase Four Expansion would be required, you know, based upon these growth rates. And I I believe, well, Cody and I worked on this and and we came up with some some numbers here for for growth. And 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 growth tapers that would allow our next expansion to be coming online roughly in the year. Excuse me, roughly in the year twenty thirty-seven. So that was also thought through when we developed these growth projections. The other stuff down here, I'm I'm going to touch on briefly and then Michael kind of help me out here momentarily. Getting back to 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 the loading of the current wastewater plant. The what we're calling the B O D loadings, that's biological oxygen demands. That's the strength of the wastewater as as Mike mentioned. Wanted to illustrate where we're at on on that capacity. So our our current capacity for treating B O D, again, strength of the wastewater is twenty-six hundred pounds per day. Roughly, a typical domestic B O D loading rate is zero point two. And what this table does right here is it takes these numbers and looks at these years here. And the population estimates that 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 Cody came up with on his growth projections and then asked the questions. Compared to these loading rates, when would we be at capacity? And the red boxes here show when we are exceeding our loading capacity. So as as as. With no surprise, it's showing that we'll be beyond capacity in twenty twenty-five. From an average B O D loading. However, as Mike mentioned. This is an average, but what they actually deal with are peaks at the plant. So if you incorporate the peaks. As expected, down here in these boxes, we were showing some. B O D loadings that are above the capacity or close to the above capacity. And these are all residential loads here. If we include some commercial loads, these numbers would even be higher. So, you know, please keep that in mind. Mike, was there anything else that you wanted to mention on the the organic loading capacities?
I really think there's a whole lot more. I probably would. Would let the board know that, you know, these peaks could be upwards of one hundred and fifty is probably the highest I've seen in the last six months, one hundred and fifty percent of capacity. Like I said, you know, a little earlier is these peaks are something that we really need to watch because these could become our new averages and if we get to those new. Higher averages. We, you know, we could see some real trouble and, you know, be able to actually treat that load. And then what will it do to our affluent and what will it do to Box Elder Creek? And that's where we could get in serious trouble. So we really need to. Just watch everything very close and I know that we are, we're doing our best at the plant to make sure that everything's taken care of and getting treated properly. So. Just kind of want you guys to be aware of what we're facing.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So let's get into some fun stuff here. So again, based upon these input parameters. And the growth projections that Cody talked through. The actual engine here of this spreadsheet is on the page I have up right now. So so this is where all the calculations take place. I'm going to walk through this kind of briefly here. So we're, this this first table right here. Looks at revenues. That's that's incoming. Funds to our sewer fund, all right, incoming monies. And and this is projected out. All the way to twenty forty-five. So on those revenue streams. We looked at the annual building permits being sold and this. Feeds directly back to Cody's numbers that he just mentioned. The impact fees. So right now our impact fees are seventy-five hundred dollars for every permit we sold residential. And then the 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 total revenues from those impact fees. Sinking fund deposits, I'm I'm going to defer that to Judy and Tyler here momentarily. Other revenue streams that we have for our sewer fund. Again, a number of our sewer customers that I mentioned, you know, this is residential, commercial. Those numbers grow up through the years. Keying in on 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 Cody's number of building permits that he sold. Our current base rate is twenty dollars and sixty three cents. Our current usage rate per thousand gallons is six dollars and fifty cents. So if you take these numbers right here and multiply them by the number of sewer customers. You get the sewer customer revenues, these dollar amounts right here, all right? So total revenues coming into Wellington Sewer Fund. Is a summation of the impact fee revenues. The sinking funds, which Judy and Tyler was talked to, and the sewer customer revenues. Expenditures are also calculated here. Things we need to spend our money on. First couple items here. Our S R F loan services. So moving forward with a thirty six million dollar loan. For the wastewater treatment plant expansion. This is what our monthly, I'm sorry, not monthly, our annual payment would be to the state. Calculates at two point three million dollars. We have another field here that we calculated to show how much remaining balance. We will have on that loan and Tyler and Judy will speak a little bit more on that. Existing bonded debt services, this is for the phase two expansion. That Bob mentioned, the one that occurred in two thousand and fifteen. So we still have some debt services left on that expansion. So we are accounting for that as payments, annual payments in our expenditures. Engineering design services, this is what we are contracted with Jacobs right now for phase four design. Roughly four point nine million dollars. So I stretched that out over the next four years on on how I think the payments will be coming in. So all these add up to roughly four point nine billion. Then we get into the admin expenses and operating expenses, these kind of echo back to inputs. That a user can input right here. So if you change these increases, these annual percentage increase, they will ripple through. In 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 this, in this calculation engine here. You know, right now. We have. The dollars you see here and expand it out at that. Annual increase percentage. For both the admin and operating expenses. Couple of things we added here, trying to be proactive here and thinking what kind of increases we'll be having in operating expenses. With a new expansion, we'll be. Will be having to add a new plant operator. So that's accounted here. Also. In the future. Thinking all the way out to twenty forty, when we have our next expansion, phase four. We'll have to add a new operator. So that dollar amount is accounted for. Capital improvement projects. So from two thousand and twenty one through two thousand and twenty four, I'm just repeating. Our our C I P budgets from the two thousand and twenty one budget. Those are the dollar amounts you see presented here. We did add a couple of things here. For. The wastewater treatment plant construction and a new vehicle, things of that nature. That we foresee happening in the next five years. In two thousand and twenty five, after the new plant comes online, we'll be needing some C I P funds. To take a look at the existing plant equipment. The erosion basin, as I mentioned, new lift stations. We anticipate we might need to be spending some money on that. So that's accounted for. And you could see as we get closer and closer to the next expansion in in the late thirties here, we've got the dollar amounts in there. For 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 those expansions, that's in this row right here, plan for expansion. So. We're assuming right now that half of the engineering fees in two thousand and forty roughly will be funded. By us and the other half will be will be taking on a loan for that. So summing up the total expenditures right here. Summation of everything above, all the colors right here are summing up, which add to the total expenditures each year. Financial results, this last table right here are kind of, you know, the year end balances and the year start balances. So starting in year two thousand and twenty one. January first of this year, we had ten million dollars roughly in our sewer fund. The year end in two thousand and twenty one is just subtracting all of the expenditures we anticipate occurring in two thousand and twenty one. And that year end balance becomes the year start balance for the next year. Same thing for the year end balance for two thousand and twenty two, just subtracting off all the expenditures and this goes on and on and on all the way to twenty. Forty two, I believe, twenty forty five, sorry. So. With that. Those calculations on that previous page. Display these resulting graphs here. And the graph. Takes a look at what our year end balance would be. Our required reserve policy, required reserve policy is a hundred and ten percent of our debt services. And the remaining balance on our S R F loan. The scenario I'm showing you right now, and this was in the package, is 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 our option one, no action. So if if we take no action with rates or impact fees. This is what would happen. We we'd be okay for two thousand and twenty two. But in two thousand and twenty three, we will start having shortages. What you can do with this spreadsheet here with this page is start looking at scenarios. For instance, let me just demonstrate to you, you know, some of the things that the team was working on. Let let we we're it's shown right here that that we will not be. Meaning our reserve in two thousand and twenty three, so we'd have to do something with either the impact fees or the rates. So let's say we want to increase our our impact fees, right? We can go back here and say let's increase our impact fees by three hundred dollars. Every year, starting in two thousand and twenty three. And that will ripple through here, excuse me, you can see these impact fees going up, three hundred dollars each year. You can see that helped, but we're not quite there yet. So I'm just kind of making up numbers here. Let's raise our base raise for two thousand and twenty two to thirty dollars. Well, it helped. The red boxes here are still indicating our reserves are not met, we're still six hundred and ninety six. Thousand dollars short. Let's bring that up to forty dollars. Not quite there yet. And the the, again, these are many, many scenarios that the team has worked through. I just typed in here sixty, which 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 works. That's that's not what we're recommending here as we'll get to momentarily. But that kind of gives you you all a demonstration on how this spreadsheet works. So with that, I think it's time to turn it over to Tyler and Judy. To talk about like the sinking fund and and other things. And Judy and Tyler, I'd be happy to keep these spreadsheets on the screen for everybody. Just just let me know what to do and I will bring up what you need.
So this is Judy and I think I'll briefly jump in with the sinking fund. And then I'll have Tyler, and of course I can't see Tyler, so I'm going to say he's nodding yes. So I'll have him run through the other two scenarios and a scenario that we that we arrived at as what we would recommend. And so the thought process behind a sinking fund is. We're taking Cody's how fast we would grow. We're taking the debt. And it's it's a big balancing act. And so right now, when we talked about the water fund, you have four pieces of debt that are stacked inside of that fund. Which makes the task that was in front of us difficult. And tonight we're talking about the sewer fund and we have two existing pieces of debt. Right now, so we have the one from two thousand and two and it's got two more years on it. And that balance is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we have the one that was taken out in two thousand and sixteen and the balance on that is about one point eight million dollars. That is referred to as stacking of debt. And so what a sinking fund allows you to do is if we amortize this note for twenty years. And we arrive at those twelve thousand, roughly that population of twelve thousand at the same time. Then that would be great. The reality is if we see years where Cody's having the two hundred and seventy, three hundred. Building permits, or if you look at the. The master plan, they're estimating we could hit that at two thousand and thirty three. What a sinking fund does is allow you to take those additional, if those taps are coming on faster. That say we get to the the point in two thousand and thirty three, or I think on our front page, Dave had two thousand and thirty seven. That we are in a position where we are going to have to talk about phase four. Of that loan, that we have set some of these tap fees aside. To pay off or refund the existing debt. And it's it's really the fiscally responsible thing to do for your citizens that you have today. Our future citizens, so that we do not continue, if we do that in about in two thousand and thirty six, I believe, two thousand and thirty five. My balance existing on this loan would be fifteen million dollars. And that is pretty egregious to say, okay, we're going to need phase four. But by the way, guys, you still have fifteen million dollars existing on that debt. And so what we did is we entered, you know, in the beginning, I just had it as a point of intersection. And so on Dave's, where you see the fund balance reducing or the loan balance reducing. We are trying to say, when are, when is that point of intersection? So if it doesn't, if it goes smoothly and we hit the magic, you know, twelve thousand additional people, which comes out to be. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty taps. If that happened over a twenty year period, that's excellent. That would be our amortization timeframe matched up with the growth. However, if your growth happens faster, it allows you to set some of that funding aside. So that you don't have that fifteen million dollar loan balance and no way to pay it off. So. As as Mike was talking about the biological, it's this is really just a balancing of so many pieces. We have the tap fees, we have the base rate, the user fees. And what that that sinking fund is, it's basically your parking funds. At which point you hit the twelve thousand people, wherever that happens, faster or slower. We have funds to go in and pay that off. So it would be very much like. On in your personal life, I'm going to buy a new house or I'm going to build a new home. I would have to, you know, it would be fiscally responsible to pay off my other house first, right? I mean, you're not going to. You'd have two of them. So that's what a sinking fund is. And again, I just think it's the responsible thing to do for the current, the current citizens and and definitely the future users. Because otherwise, we're putting them exactly where we are today. Where we we have two existing loans out right now. Thank goodness, the balances are not as high as fifteen million dollars. The second part of that is Trusty White House has gone to some. Some, I don't know if they were necessary classes or. Conferences where information is brought to you. And so. We're in a position right now with a ten million dollar fund balance, we committed five million of that for design. And then you have a fund balance policy that is dictated to you. That we we're going to have a two point three million dollar payment. So your fund balance is off of that, it's a hundred and ten percent of that. So what we're talking about is when when you go in and we start talking about future plant expansions. And I think, you know, Trusty White House heard this before, but when you go in and you wanted to do. A rating with either Moody's or S and P, explore other options. If we had cash available to us right now, we would have many other funding options. And it's not to say the state revolving one is necessarily a poor choice. It's our only choice right now. We don't have matching funds. And that is referred to as a loan to value. And so right now, we're basically asking to fund or to get a loan amount for the full amount of our construction. And so just moving forward, I think that we can be, we can put our citizens into a position. Where we would get a better bond rating, which would give us, you know, better choices in the future for. That plant and it also allows us to refund or pay off the existing debt. At the time we hit the twelve thousand additional people. So that's the sinking fund. And then very, very briefly. Well, I think what I'll do at this point is I'll let Tyler, we'll go through the models. And then we'll come back and we can address a little bit about fund balance or funding. In the inside of an enterprise fund.
Okay, thanks, Judy. So in your packet, we presented three options. If Dave you want to pull up the first one, I think Dave quickly went over it, but I can just go over it real quickly again. We kind of want to do it similar to like how the water rates were rolled out. At least for this first round to give you guys more of like an idea of how the like the types that we could go with. So the first one is, you know, obviously the the no action plan. And we just kind of get, give you kind of the idea of what happens if we just sit back and kind of let. Take on the new water treatment plant, take on the loans and do all those things with no increases to. The sewer base rates, the usage rates or the impact fees. And as you can see, it's very similar to like when we present the water is that, you know, the the funds start to go negative quite quickly. And so it kind of gives that impression that there's, we have to do something at this point. And so the team and I, we all looked at, like like Patty said, a bunch of options, we looked at a bunch of scenarios. And we wanted to kind of bring at least two types of scenarios to you. So option two is, let's see if Dave can pull that up, is a flat base increase. We brought this one to kind of see if you guys were interested in seeing that, you know, a steady base and usage rate for the next, you know, potential five years. We just rolled that out for indefinitely, but at least for the next five years, you'd have the same amount. And we we figured that would give, you know, our customers the ability to have a set amount for the next five years they can depend on. And knowing that it's not going to go up or down. And as you can see. We increased the impact fees from seventy five hundred to ninety seven hundred with a three hundred dollar increase. Per year going through the model. So. That sets the the base rate for the first three thousand gallon uses at forty six dollars and then a fifteen dollar usage. This would be a average consumer base rate of a usage of sixty one dollars because our typical users roughly use about four thousand gallons. So that would be going from the twenty seven fifteen or something where that amount is to the sixty one. And that would be pretty much set for the next five years. So we want to give you another option and this is the one the staffs recommend recommending for the board is option three.
Okay, I'm pulling it up, Tyler.
Okay, so it's the same.
Here we go.
Same same impact fee usage. So we go from the seventy five hundred to the ninety seven hundred with a three hundred dollar increase. Over the next for a period of time. And then. We also increase, we go from the sewer base rate from a twenty sixty three to thirty six dollars. And then you see that slowly increase throughout the year. So it's a two dollar increase. Pretty much almost every year until we hit twenty twenty eight. And it kind of flattens out. And then we'd say the sewer usage rate is we double it to from six fifty to thirteen. With a dollar fifty to start and then another two dollars and pretty much that, you you're going to see about a four dollar increase. For the next, you know, till twenty twenty eight or till, you know, we update the model or do get more, you know, data. So. This, we recommended this is because, you know, it allows us to ease into the rate increases. And it also allows us to have a lower base rate to start. So we're they're only averaging about a forty nine dollar. Total average sewer bill compared to the sixty one. And so we kind of want to give you the two sides and kind of let you guys give us feedback on which one you prefer. Things you would like us to try. But like I said, we have tried a lot of a lot of options in the last few months and. This was, option three is the best one we could come with, to kind of make it easier on everyone. Within the community as developers, new users, old users and stuff. So that's kind of where we landed. And then I'll let Judy kind of finish off the, kind of talk about the funds and the fund balances and the enterprise funds, so.
If I if I could mention one quick thing, I forgot, apologies. Um, defining what, what the lines mean here, everybody. Uh, I believe I mentioned the blue bars here represent the year-end uh, balances in our sewer fund. And the orange line represents our reserve policy, so we, we, we can't go below that line. Um, the blue line here is the sinking fund balance as Judy uh, described. Uh, and you could see it going up, going up, going up till about twenty-thirty-five, when we would, you know, cash in on some of those funds. For, for, oh, I'm sorry, for paying off the phase three debt uh, at that time. Roughly about fifteen million dollars. Then we see another increase of a few years and then taking some monies out of that sinking fund again to pay for half. Of the phase four cost. And then from there on, we start seeing it increase again. The dash red line here, everybody, is showing the remaining balance on our phase three, our current S R F loan. Uh, one, one thing, one more thing I wanted to show everybody here. So uh, thirty-six dollars and, and thirteen is about the lowest we can go without having any kind of. Uh, issues with the reserve not being met. So if I type in, you know, thirty-five here, uh, you could see we got a problem in twenty-thirty-seven. We're short twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, put that back to thirty-six. Um, let's say we think thirteen might be a little bit too high for the sewer usage rates. So I'll type in ten dollars there. And uh, the, the machine here tells us that we got some problems in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. With the reserves not being met. And you can see it graphically down here with the blue bars slightly underneath the, the orange line here. So uh, undoing that. And that's back, that's, it gets us back to where we were for um, for our expansions. There we go.
Yes, thank you Dave. Um, I think we have spent so much time with this. Um, we are very, very intimate that we know what these lines are. And so um, I'm glad you went back and talked about that because for those of us that work with this. Um, the magic blue lines at the bottom. And then if you see the red above on the top where Dave was at, um, that's how we instantly knew it wasn't something that could work with us. And so we did, we went back and the three hundred dollar annual increase that we came up with. Um, we worked with Cody on that. And if you remember, we said we were gonna do the two hundred dollar increase inside of the water. And so we were trying to find a number very similar to that, um, that Cody could take to. Out and work with his developers and say, you can plan on an annual increase. And so obviously, when you're pulling a water up tap, you're pulling the sewer at the same time. So that would be a five hundred dollar increase um, on both of those. And we felt that that was something that we could um, share with the developers. They could um, you know, program that in and that it would be every year that they could use that and work with that. So that's, that's a little bit about where we came up with those. And then as Tyler had mentioned, we, we did feel that the, the thirty-six and the thirteen um, for forty-nine was a lot. Uh, easier on our existing customers. They could plan accordingly, knowing that they're gonna see very small incremental increases. Um, if they know that, again, I think setting the expectations um, that folks can plan for that and um. And be ready for it instead of all of it coming on at one time. And so um, briefly, I wanted to, there has been um, how we have the Facebook and internet, lots of questions going. Um, coming back and forth about can we use money from somewhere else to pay for that? Um, can we cut something inside? So I very, very briefly, high level, wanted to remind people, um, these are enterprise funds. So inside government uh, funding or government accounting is a little bit different. Then, because we're not for profit, we're never out there to make money. We're to do the best that we can for our citizens. And so an enterprise fund is um, run very much like a business. So the revenue that comes in needs to pay for it exactly with. So the way I always describe it is within the walls of that fund. So the sewer revenues that come in need to pay for the expenditures that are required to run that plant. Same conversation is true, the money coming in the water fund needs to pay for the expenditures inside of the water fund. Um, and so you cannot cross over, we can't use money from water to pay for sewer and vice versa. And then our other enterprise fund that we're not talking about this evening is the drainage fund. So the town of Wellington, we, we have three enterprise funds. And so I just wanted to mention that because I know, um, and trust me, we've been doing this for four months. We have explored every option that we could think of. Um, and so to, we, we've looked outside and Patty and I have talked at length about if, you know, we could find. Any kind of grants. Um, and I think we, you know, obviously, we continue to explore all options. But I also think we need to understand if, if something does not come, that we need to be prepared. Um, because we cannot, as Cody said, those, those um. The one hun- the one twenty-one, the ninety-nine, those permits are just about as low as we can go. Um. Yeah, and, and still, I mean, we have to stay open for business. But at the same time, we cannot stress that plant to the point where we have a catastrophic failure. So we have, as a team, come together, we have explored every one of these inputs. And tried to bring to you this evening what we felt was the best balance.
Um, in, in conclusion, um, unless there's something else that you wanted to mention Judy?
I forgot about you, so yep, thank you.
Yeah, uh, we've obtained a survey, every year, uh, the state does a uh, a survey. Uh, Department of Local Government, uh, Department of Local Affairs, excuse me, DOLA. Uh, conducts a survey on rates across the state for, for water and wastewater. Um, scrolling down to the wastewater section here, it cover, covers water here, what typical rates are for water. Um, for, for sewer, uh, highlighted in this, these two tables right here. So the average monthly residential sewer bill for a municipal customer is, is about thirty-eight dollars. Um, with a range going from eleven dollars and fifty cents to nearly eighty dollars. Uh, so the rates that we're proposing are, are, are within that rate, within that range. Um, average monthly residential bill for special districts, water sanitation, et cetera. That's like Box Elder Sanitation District, for instance. Uh, tho- those bills range from twenty-two dollars and fifty cents to a hundred and eleven dollars. Um, so again, I, again, the race that we're, we're proposing are, are, are within that range. Uh, sewer bills also from the twenty-nineteen uh, survey are, are included in this document. Um, so I just wanted to uh, illustrate that. Um, that what we're proposing are, 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 are within, are within those uh, those boundaries. And I believe that's pretty much concludes what we had. Oh, did we wanna talk about the commercial wa- uh, water and sewer rates, Judy and Tyler? Was there something we wanted to talk about there on the commercial rates?
Mostly, I would just offer that there are one hundred and forty-six non-residential taps. And I, so what we did um, for this model, we, so there's four thousand one hundred and three uh, residential taps. So right now, that is reflected inside of there until we get more data. I think um, moving forward, um, Mike spoke about doing. So what happens is you have to go out to those individual businesses um, to, to measure. And so I don't think that we have the data to speak um, and, and make a, you know, a recommendation tonight. Um, so I think what we did is we, we combined those hundred and forty-six taps in there. So the model is showing all taps and we didn't break those out. I do think at some point when we have more data, we will come back to you with some biological um. Numbers that reflect that. And Dave, can you show that one where it showed even though there's a hundred and forty-six users, yep, 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 right there? So even though there's a hundred and forty-six uh, commercial users, those right there. Um, Tyler, help me out. Yep, it's the top ten that really make the difference. So out of the hundred and forty-six right there are the ones that we'll need to concentrate on.
Yeah, the, the top ten users use up about sixty percent of the total um, commercial revenue. So um, once you Drake Blake, or dr- drop below the, the ten users, it starts to significantly drop off. So they are the heaven, heavy burdens on the plant and they bring in most of the revenue, so.
I believe that's all we had to present. At this point, uh, we're happy to uh, try to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you for, for listening, everybody.
Team, I'm so proud of the work you put into that. I know you've spent a lot of time on it, it's concise, it's covering everything, a lot of scenarios you can actually uh, build upon it, you could enhance it. You can draw data when you had analyze it every quarter, that sort of thing, look for other options. That being said, let's just vote around the board real quick, trustee Whitehouse, you wanna start first?
Uh, sure, sure. I mean, I had the good fortune of seeing this last Thursday at the mayor's meeting. So it's not, not my first go-around, but it's, I don't know, it's, it's quite impressive. I don't necessarily like the numbers it spits out, but uh, I, I, I believe they're accurate. And again, we're, we're a little bit of a pickle here. And I think this is a great tool to understand what is going on and, and how to resolve it on the financial sides. But uh, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great team effort. So I wanna say thank you to all of you and thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Jerome, you got anything you wanna add?
I was gonna echo what trustee, trustee Whitehouse said. I mean, this is probably the most comprehensive um, presentation I've seen yet to date. Um, which it, this particular subject obviously deserves, you know, the most scrutiny. Look at it because of, of the ramifications, you know, moving forward. But I just wanna thank everybody that was involved in, in uh, putting all the blood, sweat and tears. And I just wanna know, Dave, are you the uh, the uh, spreadsheet wizard that was able to? Set up all the tabulations or did you guys get somebody else to do that for you?
Um, I'm embarrassed to admit, yes, it was me.
Okay, alright, but yeah, no, this is a great tool for um, for us to, to use. Not only probably now, but going, you know, in, looking into the future. I know that. Several years ago, you know, the town didn't have the staff with the ability to, to dive in as deep as, as you guys have dived into this situation. So um, we, you know, we as a board have some. Things to look at. And to debate and talk about and, and you know, hopefully, we can come to a, a, a good resolution or a good outcome at the end of this. But I just wanna thank you very much for um, putting all the hard work into at least be able to provide us with the information we need to make a good decision. So thank you to everybody.
Trustee Kenny, you got anything you wanna add?
Yeah, a few things. Um, if I could get a quick reminder on how the usage is calculated for um, for sewage. Is it a percentage of their water? Is it directly related?
I, I didn't hear the question.
I, I can field that one.
Got it, okay.
So how it gets calculated is we do um, the average of the January, February, March bills. We take your three months average and then whatever your water consumption for those three months are, is your new sewer rate for the, for, for the next year. So if uh, you averaged, you know, four thousand uh, for those three months, your sewer rate will be four. And you'll be paying the, a four rate for that whole year. And it gets reevaluated every April.
Okay, and then. Okay, alright, that was one of my questions. And then on the models, it was showing totals then, right? So total usage, so it is not. Um, the increased amount times four thousand, which is the average user. It's that, that would be the total for the usage. There's that per one thousand that makes me confused a little bit. So the, get a total average bill from what to what for an average user? Can that recommend it?
So our current average consumer is at four thousand. So at the, the first three thousand is that twenty-sixty-three base rate.
Yeah.
And that's your first three and then the six fifty would be the usage rate. So our average consumer, we were basing the model off, would be on a four thousand. Um, on a four thousand usage. So uh, our average user off, you know, price for the option three would be forty-nine dollars.
Okay, so that is the total. So when I see the usage rate thirteen dollars per thousand and then think of an average user four thousand, sometimes in my head, I was multiplying that by four. So I wanna make sure that that's, you know, that that would be a total thirty-six plus thirteen for the average user, which is expected four thousand gallons.
Yes, so anything above the three thousand, we cha- on this model right here, we'd be charging you um, thirteen dollars per one thou- per additional thousand over the three thousand. Cause that's kinda the standard, so.
Alright, so any user that's at the four thousand could expect this, five thousand would be additional thirteen dollars?
Correct.
Thank you. Alright, um, and then the other part, I wanted to um, also give my thank yous. I know that we um, invested a significant amount in the water rate study to essentially do the services that you're showing us. Externally rather than internally. And then we used a model that was created for us that was highly, highly complex. And maybe didn't, wasn't applicable to a lot of our needs and concerns. Um, directly related, having all of our great minds in our town staff work on this. You identified essentially everything that's important to our community to impact these rates. And then we were able to make a model that was more useful in my mind. So I, I just wanna commend you guys for all the work and service that you've done on this because it's significant. And the fact that this is done in-house has saved their community a significant amount of money already. So I think that is um, an amazing task, a great output. So thank you for getting us started on this conversation.
Trustee, can you think of anything you wanna?
That's a lot to digest, yep.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Gator.
So I do have several questions. Um, first off, I did wanna echo what uh, trustee Kenny said. And uh, again, kinda watching what happened with the water rates, I think what was done here is a lot more beneficial and very specific to our community. So a fantastic job to staff, the presentation and here, I think is a lot, I feel is a lot more helpful and beneficial than what we received for the water rates. So this is very beneficial, so thank you. Um, so I guess a couple of questions first, and I guess this would be for Bob. Is, are we required by the state of Colorado to go all the way up to one point nine million gallons per day on a sewer plant?
Um, no, we're not. Uh, most of our planning is based on what we've observed in terms of past growth rates here. So if there was a dramatic shift in growth rates, it, it could impact a lot of this. Yes, that's true. Uh, it impacts it in more ways than one, though. If we um, reduce the amount of impact fee revenue we get. That would have um, kind of consequential impacts to this entire financial analysis. And those are all things that can be done with this spreadsheet that uh, that Dave's created.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what is, if it's not the state that's requiring us to go to one point nine million with this large of a project, what is requiring us to go this large?
It's the likelihood of additional growth in the town. And um, we would need some kind of expansion, as we discussed earlier. Um, to address the organic loading issues that we have and uh, aging infrastructure out there. So we would still have a substantial project on our hands, just to get ready for even a static growth condition in the future. But um, in general, you, you saw the growth uh, projections that we're planning for. Those are actually quite a bit lower than the historic growth projections over the last ten years, so.
Okay, um, and then. So I guess, kind of my thoughts, and I appreciate, and it's tip it's your, um, you shared it with the funds and not transferring between and why that doesn't happen. Again, we're supposed to run this like a business, right? The money that comes in for that is supposed to pay for the expenditures that go out. And we're not here to make a profit, we're just here to have it run. And I appreciate you sharing that. And so for me, I looked at it and really again, I appreciate what the staff has done, this is a thing for the board. Is, I think that we need to reevaluate the size of this project. You cannot. is I think that we need to reevaluate the size of this project. You cannot fill this project. It's it's simple. If we're having to go out and do, I'm not saying we can't do anything, but I think the size of what we're looking to do is not responsible. We're already down that road on the water and we're about screwed again. So I think we need to go back and reevaluate. I think we're at a good point with that as we're redoing our comp plan. And I think we need to look very seriously, seriously limiting the growth in this town to a higher level. Because at this point, if we do this level of an expansion, the only way that we're going to be able to do that is to highly tax our citizens through their their sewer. So I think that the answer is not staff. They've done a great job of pulling this information together and trying to find a way that works. And I think they found some great solutions. The other solution is in our hands as to saying, we need to reduce the amount of growth and we need to do a smaller project at this point. That is kind of my thoughts that we were at on this because simply, I mean, if I was a business owner, I could not do this to the rates of my clients. They don't leave. And I have no clients. I have no business. Because our citizens can't leave unless they move out of town. They're kind of stuck with it. So I think that we need to reevaluate the size of the project that we're doing because if we can take that even from a forty million dollar project to a twenty or twenty-five million dollar project, I think that will have a very large impact on what we're going to have to put out to our citizens. So those are kind of my thoughts.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, there's a lot of information here and there's a lot of good points brought up. We got to really stew on it a little bit. And I know the citizens are going to have to think about what they're seeing there too as well. And we'll probably have to study some of that. There's just a lot of questions that can be brought up a little later if you put some thought to it. Couple of questions, Ms. Tippett's. Are we doing accelerated payment on phase three to get ready for phase four in twenty-thirty-seven? Is that what that's all about?
No. What it is, is we're trying to match. So if I take twelve thousand people and divide that by three point two persons per household, that means that we can have three thousand seven hundred and fifty taps. And so however, whenever we reach that number, that would be when that next plant would come on. So if we, if that doesn't happen for twenty years, your sinking fund, you would have no money in the sinking fund. If it happens faster, then you I would want to set some money aside so that when you have to build phase four, you're not trying to still fund phase three. Does that make sense?
Right. And then I think that's, I think that's good fiscal thinking. I mean, that's a long way down the road. This board won't be here when that happens.
And then one thing I did mention, I forgot to mention is we we did not start the sinking fund until twenty-twenty-four when that plant comes online. We're not in a position to do that. We also do not have access to the taps that Cody told us that we could use and still kind of keep a balance between everything. So those first several years, the sinking fund is completely, it is turned off. And that's on your input screen where you can turn it on or off. So the sinking fund would start after what Cody refers to as we're open for business. And then whenever you get to those three thousand seven hundred and fifty taps, that's when you would have to technically bring phase four of the sewer plant.
Right. Okay. The other thing I'd like to see, would like to see those commercial customers get evaluated as soon as possible. I think there's some pretty big usage there. They ought to be in the mix on a fair basis. And the other thing I might say is, you know, three percent growth is two, someone's two and a half percent growth. That's not very high for any town, you know, not point that out. That's that's the lowest in the history of this town. So that's pretty, we made it, we've tried to slow the thing, not not on purpose, but it's just happened. And you need some of that growth and help pay for things. And it's not just otherwise citizens got to pay for it. Someone that's kind of shares. So it's a balancing act. There's quite a bit here to think about and take home and make questions on. And I expect a lot of them when they come back. Anything else to add tonight? You want to follow up on something?
So to, we'll be sending out the spreadsheet to all of you to be able to play with and come up with some calculations on, you know, and you can send us your ideas and things like that. But we do want to follow up with you all. And I don't know if you want that to happen at another study session or if you would like to see this at a regular meeting so that there's public comment allowed on how you would like us to proceed to staff.
Well, we're going to have to get to that point for sure. But we, there's a lot there and it may require another study session. I don't know that. I don't know if we think about that.
Can we do a work session so we can hash some of this out and then do a follow-up session where it's open for public comment?
Absolutely. We can do that. I just wanted to make sure we felt the succession that you want.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't, right. I want to give everybody the opportunity to study this thing, come up with whatever scenarios, options from the public, give them their time, you know, because we will take them all. But but you got a great model here and and all the work you've done and it's user friendly. It seems like you can play with and plug it in. It's better than what the consultants did, I think. And I look forward to putting that water treatment plant through the grinder one day. See what happens. We get some more data in. Maybe we've got something to work with.
Let's take care of this one first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just like to circle back. I want to maybe consider this for as a topic for another town hall for our next quarter that's upcoming too. So.
So that, exactly. And this, that is what I scheduled. It's essentially, we earmarked it as water rates, but we'll probably leave it with a wastewater treatment plan expansion.
Great. Perfect. Great. So make sure we invite as much public comment and feedback as possible.
We don't want to, we don't want to fail in that area. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, staff, everybody, all your help, trustees for showing up, everybody, the public. Now, let's call it. We'll come back. Study it, study up on your spreadsheet. Thank you very much.
Buddy.